Again, thanks for joining us this morning. We had a very special treat this morning, several guests that, you know, every single day, our leadership is fighting the fight in the other Washington. Washington is not quite as fun as one word in Washington DC. They're very fortunate to have two leaders and two command teams with their spouses that every day represent us. And I can tell you, the Chief of Staff and Sergeant Major of the Army are consistently working what's the right thing to do for soldiers and their families and how to balance out the needs of the Army and our missions all across, all across the world. So, I really am proud to introduce our 38th Chief of Staff, General Ray Odierno's lovely wife, Linda, who are here today to join us, and then our 14th Sergeant Major of the Army, Sergeant Major Ray Chandler, and his lovely wife, Jean, who also made the trip out here to join us and look forward to as many questions as possible and discussion back and forth and all the many issues going on in our Army. Sir?
Thanks, Bob. Well, thank you very much. It's great to be back here at Fort Lewis. Every time when I come back to a place like this, it makes me feel older because I commanded my battalion here 19 years ago, in 93, 94, so it kind of reminds me how old I'm getting. But it also is great to be back here at Fort Lewis, and every time I come back, I'm amazed at how much it's changed, how much bigger it is. Back then, there was probably about 15,000 soldiers here. Today, there's much more than that, over 30,000 that are here. New facilities, training areas improved, so it's really tremendous coming back here to see the great progress that's been made here. What I wanted to do is take an opportunity, and I'll talk for about 15 minutes, maybe less, what I really want to do is hear from you, and I hope you're prepared to ask Sergeant Major and myself, Sergeant Major of the Army and myself, questions because we want to know what's on your mind, and we want to be able to answer whatever questions you might have on what's going on in the Army, because there is a lot going on today. So first, I want to thank General Brown, his wife, Command Sergeant Major Troxell, General Lanza and Sergeant Major, and all the leaders that are here. We have great leaders here, and it's really great to see everybody, so thank you for hosting us. We really appreciate it very much. I'll start out by kind of talking about what's going on today in our Army. Well, there's a lot going on, as you all know, here. 42 Strikers on its way back deploying. I think there's been about 15 units deployed now, another 7, 8, 9 getting ready to deploy. So you continue to be in that churn of deployments that we continue to have, and we've had for a very long time. As I stand here today, there are 75,000 soldiers deployed, about, almost just under 60,000 in Afghanistan, another 15,000 other places in the Middle East, to include Gutter, Kuwait, Jordan, Turkey, many other places. And then we have about 90,000 soldiers stationed in 150 countries around the world. What does that mean? That means our Army is engaged. It remains to be engaged, even though we are facing some fiscal challenges in our nation, which means we're facing some fiscal challenges in our Army that we have to face. We're in a time of great transition. Even though we're still in the midst of combat operations in Afghanistan, we're coming out of war, a 10-year war, a seven or eight-year war in Iraq, a 12-year war in Afghanistan, and we're now trying to shape ourselves for the future. But whenever you have to transition, there's some difficulty in those transitions, and one of those difficulties we have now is our budget. And right now, our budget is misaligned with what our requirements are, and we're working as hard as we can with Congress to get these better aligned. As you know, this year, I think you know, we had some significant shortfalls in our budget, and it was kind of a Bermuda Triangle of impacts that occurred, where Congress didn't approve a budget, so we had a continuing resolution, we had a shortfall in our money that was, we needed for Afghanistan, and then we had sequestration. What that meant to the Army about, in March, is we had about a $20 billion shortfall. That's a lot of money. Congress helped us with about $6 billion of that, which left us with about a $12 billion shortfall. So we had to take some drastic actions to meet that shortfall, because I was not going to not fund, obviously, the war in Afghanistan. Our soldiers, sailors, airmen, Marines, Coast Guardsmen that are in harm's way, they obviously are first priority, to make sure they have everything they need to prosecute our operations in Afghanistan. So we had to do a few things. We had to sniffling curtail training here in the United States. We had to curtail some of our reset of our equipment. We had to announce a furlough of civilian personnel for 11 days, which is significant. So these are actions that we did not want to take, but were necessary. And in fact, as I stand here today, we still have a $3.1 billion shortfall that I'm trying to find money for to pay for the rest of the year. We think we've come up with a solution, but we're still working our way through it. So, that's my problem, not yours, but I want you to know that that's why we've had to curtail some training. As we go into 14, which starts October 1st, fiscal year 14 starts October 1st, we're still going to have some budget issues that we have to work through. But we'll do that, and we'll make sure that you get what you need, and I'm going to ask commanders and first sergeants and the chain of command to do the best with the money we give you as we continue to move forward. So as part of these budget reductions, you probably know that yesterday, we made an announcement that, you know, we've been talking about now for about a year, that we have to reduce the size of the active component Army from 570 to 490,000. And yesterday, before I hopped on a plane to come out here, I laid, in a press conference, I announced the structure changes that we're going to have in our Army that will get us down to 490,000, which focuses around the elimination of 12 Brigade Combat Teams around the Army. It also talked about how we're reorganizing our Infantry and Armor Brigade Combat Teams back into three Battalion Brigades, which through the analysis and study that we've done, is what we need to move to the future, and also includes some improvements in engineers and fires and some other things in these brigades. So over the next two to three years, we will start this transition. Of course, some will start right away, some will be next year, some will be the year after, and we'll continue to refine that based on our budget situation. So we've already taken two brigades out of Germany, that's finished this year. We took out a Corps Headquarters in Germany, and then we announced 10 other brigades that will come out of the United States, one being here at Fort Lewis, 42 Striker. We also announced that we're taking brigades out of Fort Hood, Fort Bragg, Fort Bliss, Fort Riley, Fort Carson, Fort Knox, Fort Drum, Fort Campbell, all the major installations. We will take a brigade and we'll try to reinvest those reductions into the remaining brigades as we add a third maneuver battalion. So that's what's kind of going on today. What we have to do is continue to maintain the highest readiness levels that we can with the money we're given, because you all read the papers, there's great uncertainty out there in the world, and I don't know, we might call on to do our next mission, wherever that might be. We know there's significant unrest in the Middle East centered around Syria, and there's other things going on in the Middle East that we have to be careful of. We have, in here, though, we are focused on the Pacific region, where we have almost all of Joint Base Lewis McCord focused on the Pacific, as that's our priority now and our new strategy that we've developed. But we have concerns about our new leader in North Korea and what he's been doing. We have to make sure we are shaping our force to prevent conflict in the Pacific region. And the units here, from the First Corps Headquarters down through the brigades, both Combat Combat Support Combat Service Port and Medical and all the other brigades will play a role in that. And we're defining a concept of what we're calling regionally lined forces. You're aligned with PACOM. Other units in the Army will be aligned with CENTCOM, or SOUTHCOM, or AFRICOM. As I stand here today, we have a brigade that's operating in Africa, doing over 93 different events this year inside of Africa, as we try to shape the Africa continent, because we see the threat of terrorism moving into Africa, transnational terrorism. We will continue to support building capabilities in the Middle East, and we're going to, and our primary effort will be continue to shape the Pacific region. So there's lots of things for us to do as we go forward, and to me, that's pretty exciting, that as we go forward, you're going to have the opportunity, depending on where you are, to deploy to many different places for shorter periods of time. And so this is the new Army, and what we're talking about as a new Army is something that is globally responsive and regionally engaged. That's kind of our tagline. What do we mean by that? That means we have to be able to respond anywhere in the world very quickly. That means we have to move to an expeditionary mindset, as I call it. And some people out there might think, well, we kind of have that now. We just got done doing a whole bunch of deployments. But in reality, where we were deploying to Iraq and Afghanistan, we were already deploying to very mature infrastructure that had been built up over many years. When I talk about expeditionary mindset, I mean the ability to deploy in small packages to remote areas that has very little infrastructure, where we have to be able to communicate very quickly, we have to be able to survive without lots of support. That's the Army we were as we went into Iraq and Afghanistan. We've got to rebuild that capability. So it's important that we understand that as we go forward. We also have other challenges, and then when I talk about engagement, I talk about us being able to engage around the world, because the armies of other nations are their dominant forces. We have to be able to engage with them to prevent conflict, to shape the area, and we can do that through exercises. We can do that through training foreign forces. We can do that through other multilateral exercises that we would conduct. But the one thing we can't ever forget as an Army, we must have the capability to deter, and that means we must sustain a high level of readiness so we can deter people from miscalculating and making mistakes in the future. So that's where we're headed, but there's some other things that we're doing that we've just recently announced. We've recently announced a new leader development program about two weeks ago, where we've restructured how we will develop non-commissioned officers, officers and Department of the Army civilians as we go forward. We're looking at, we're reinvesting in our schools. We're adjusting what we do in our schools. We're looking at assignment policies. So we build capability with broader thought processes, because the challenges we're going to have are more complex, and we've got to be able to operate in complex environments. Our strength of our Army is our leaders. We have the best leaders in the world. We have to sustain that advantage, so we have to invest in our leader development program. We've announced a campaign of the Army profession, which is about understanding the responsibilities that we're giving when we put on this uniform, that we represent the United States of America with our moral and ethical values. We are true ambassadors of this country as we go worldwide. I just told you, we have right now 165,000 soldiers in different countries around the So our profession is important, and our profession, the bedrock of our profession is trust. And we have to build, we have to sustain trust between ourselves, our soldiers. We have to sustain trust between soldiers and leaders. We have to sustain trust between soldiers, leaders, our families in the Army, and we have to sustain trust between the Army and the American people. But right now, we have an insider threat that's challenging that trust, and that's the threat of sexual harassment, sexual assault. My, I'm spending a lot of time on this issue. Why? Because first of all, I believe it's eroding at the core of the Army. We as soldiers have to trust each other. We have to stand side by side, whether it's in Afghanistan, Iraq, Korea, or here at Fort Lewis, Washington, and we need to be there to protect each other. We shouldn't have one soldier afraid of another soldier because they're afraid they might be sexually assaulted. That's, that's, that's abhorrent to me, and it's unacceptable to me. And the only way we're going to fix it is all of us together fixing this problem. I can't stand up here, or the Sergeant Major can't stand up here and fix this problem by words. This takes action at the lowest level. It takes intervention. It takes building command climates that people feel comfortable enough to report those who I call predators, and that people feel comfortable reporting that they've been sexually harassed or sexually assaulted. I need you all to take this on. For us to be a successful all-volunteer Army, we need every soldier to feel comfortable that they are in an environment where they can continue to grow as an individual, so we can grow collectively. So I need your help in eradicating this insider threat that we have to our military. I've had to listen over the last couple of months to many congressmen, senators, and others who say, you know, "We appreciate the sacrifice that our military has made and what they've accomplished," but their trust is being eroded in us because of this problem. And we can't have that. It's up to us to change it, so I ask you to do that. I want to just close by saying how proud I am to be a soldier. I've been in the Army for 37 years. It's a pretty long time, and the reason I've stayed in the Army 37 years is because I've always been proud to wear this uniform. I'm proud of what it stands for. I'm proud of those who wear it. I'm proud of what they've done by raising the right hand to defend the Constitution of the United States, when many others won't do that. Takes a special person to do that. It takes a special civilian to dedicate their lives to the Army. I'm proud of our Army. I'm proud of what we've accomplished. I'm proud of what we will continue to do in the future, but it's going to take all of us to make sure we continue to head in that direction. This world is very uncertain, and they're going to ask for our help again. We've got to make sure we're ready when asked to go, and so we all need to make sure we're ready to do that when called upon. So, thank you for being here. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for standing up and wanting to defend your country. I want to thank the families for supporting their soldiers. Over numerous deployments, or numerous exercises, numerous training events, we can't do it without you. So, thanks a lot. I look forward to your questions, and I'm going to turn it over to Sergeant Major.
All I want to say real quickly is, we're really interested in your questions so that we can make some informed decisions as an Army. The other thing I'd ask is just to tell you thanks for behalf of Jean and I. It's a privilege to serve you and what it is that you do each and every day. It's really my first trip up here to Fort Joint Base Lewis McCord, and we've been very impressed by what we've seen, so grateful for your leadership, your service, and the many things that you accomplish each and every day as a servant leader in our Army. So thanks a lot, and let's go ahead with the questions.
Okay, who's first? Sergeant Major and I don't leave until we get at least five questions, so we'll be sitting here all day if somebody doesn't ask questions.
We've got a big group, sir. Maybe it should be 10. It's a person right down here.
Sir, Sergeant Major, how will the, if at all, the sequestration affect individuals attempting to transition from enlisted to the Green to Gold Program?
Let me take that one, sir. Okay, so we've got a great Green to Gold Program. I have not been aware of any cuts that we're going to make that's going to prevent soldiers from applying to and hopefully being accepted into the program. You know, a lot of that is paperwork and college preparation and so on, so we don't see that as really a challenge at this point, I don't believe.
What we want to do for the Officer Corps is we have several ways for people to become officers. One is you go to West Point, you can go to ROTC, you can go to OCS, and you can do Green to Gold. And we're going to continue to have those programs, because we want those programs. That gives us a diversity in the Officer Corps that we have to have. So although the Army will get smaller, we will still have all of those avenues available for everyone to try to attempt to become officers in the Army, because that's what's made us strong over the years doing that. So we'll continue the programs as we go forward. Number two back there.
Yes, sir. On the newspaper for Fort Lewis, I had read that they are changing the uniforms for all armed forces. When will that go into effect and why?
Okay, so they haven't done anything yet, okay? But there's some language in law that Congress is saying that if, best I can understand it, because I'm still not clear on this myself, what it says, if you want to change your uniform, you have to take the uniform of, you would have to come to a uniform of same service, and frankly, I don't know why, because I think service identity is important, and I frankly don't like it very much. So we're working it. So it's not a law yet, it's just a proposal. We're working our way through it, okay? And they're talking about this uniform, by the way. They're not talking about all uniforms, they're talking specifically about the battle dress uniform, right here.
Sir, Sergeant Major, you talked about a lot of kind of dark stuff. Sexual assault's still a huge problem, suicides on the rise, massive force reduction, and a change from the predictable deployment cycle for the last 10 years. Is there any positives you can offer to soldiers and about, like, anything good coming up on the horizon, sir?
Good question.
Well, before the chief offers that, you're part of the positive. You are.
That's true, actually. So here's what I say, thanks for asking that question, and I don't mean to come across negative, because that's why at the end I say I'm proud to still be a soldier. What do we have to look forward to? First, as we get smaller, we're probably going to have the best Army we've ever had, because it's going to be the best talent. We're going to be able to modernize ourselves to the right level. We're going to have a training budget that can support the size of the Army that we have, so there's going to be a lot of exciting things to do. The other thing is, with regionally lined forces, you're going to have the ability to go many places around the world in my mind. If you're here, you can go to Singapore, you can go to Australia, you can go to Korea, you can go to wherever. If you go to another unit, you could go to Nigeria, or you can go to Somalia, or you can go to somewhere else. If you go to another assignment, you might have the opportunity to go over to Europe, you know, for two or three weeks or a month at a time, and so you really get the chance, you might have the opportunity now really go to many places based on the strategy that we have. The other thing is, you're still going to be part of the best Army in the world, and I mean that. The best resource, the best train, the best leaders, the best soldiers. And to me, that's really important, because you're part of something that is better, bigger than yourself, and to me, there's lots of positive things. We're just going through a rough patch right now as we go through transition, but what I would tell all soldiers, if you do your job and you want to continue to serve, you'll have an opportunity to serve, and you're going to have exciting opportunities to contribute in the future.
That's the question, sir. The massive force reduction, what's the determination to make those cuts? Do we all have to worry about moving to our job, our position?
Yeah, so what I would say is, in this first, you know, we're taking out 80,000 right now, so you probably don't even know, but we've already taken 40,000 out. As we stand here today, we started at 570. Today, we're at 530,000 in the Army. We've done all that through natural attrition, by enforcing standards, making sure people are meeting all the standards we want, and if you don't, we ask you to go find another job. But if you meet your standards, you continue to do what you're supposed to, there'll be a job for you in the Army. Right here.
About this today, maybe I've been asked before, and it's a Supreme Court, it's a matter of fact, it's a decision now. How has the federal government and military prepared to implement this?
How is the federal government and the military prepared to implement this within the ranks?
Yeah, so we were in the process of implementing benefits for same-sex partners in the military anyhow. It was limited, and what we were doing is we were going to have same-sex partners sign an affidavit saying we're partners, and then we would provide them some benefits. With now, with DOMA, it actually, in my mind, makes it a little bit easier, because it's much clearer, and so now, as they are now, get married, we'll be able to provide them full benefits of any other partner, and we'll start executing that throughout the Army. So we've been, we've been talking about this for a long time. Sergeant Major, you want to say anything?
Just, you know, it's going to take a little bit to understand what the actual Supreme Court decision means with both the federal entity and the state entity, and we'll sort through that, but the Secretary of Defense, I think, is making an announcement that-
He did. He already, he made an announcement that says we will fully execute the law that has just been overturned by, or will uphold the Supreme Court holding, we'll implement that in the Army, or in the, in DOD, Department of Defense, so.
Thanks, sir.
We have some details to work through, but we've kind of been doing it, so I think it will be able to happen rather quickly. Rather quickly in military terms means maybe six months. And that is really quick, actually, by the way. Three.
Sir, Sergeant Major, talking about the more remote location deployments, I was wondering what our roles would be there. Would they be strictly political, humanitarian, or support?
Yes. There'll be all of them. I mean, that's, that's, that's the thing. That's what makes it exciting in the future, is that you'll deploy to do a whole bunch of things. Humanitarian assistance, disaster relief, could be there doing a joint exercise, could be deploying to deter somebody, could be deploying to actually go into combat, you could be going over to help build relationships with another country. So we have to be prepared to do all of those things, and to me, that's what makes it exciting.
And I think one of the big things that you're going to be doing is, you're going to be doing a lot of helping partner nations grow in their ability to train themselves, so how to run a range, how to conduct, you know, cordon and searches and things like that, things we're experts at as an Army, and help our partners to get better so that they will be able to take some of those burdens themselves.
Two.
How's it going, sir? Sergeant Major Chandler?
Going great. How you doing, man?
Pretty good. Pretty good, Sergeant Major.
You know, we're both doing great, because as we said, we're not in Washington DC.
That's right.
We're doing great today. I'm so happy to be out here in Washington. It's wonderful.
Well, it's not raining right now, sir, so you're good. I'm Sergeant Coslake, 127 Philatillery. That's right, gone many's for life. I guess what I wanted to ask you, sir, is with the new restructuring of forces, and you said that you're going to redo the entire structure of the armored brigades and the infantry brigades, how does the Philatillery fit into that? In the last 12 years, we kind of fell through the cracks and had to basically pick up everybody else's job but ours.
Yeah, thanks.
And, you're welcome, sir.
Well, I don't know if you know, but I was an Artoryman as I was coming up.
Right, sir. I did my homework.
So what we're doing in the brigades, infantry brigades, with times of restructuring, they're going to go from a 2-by-8 to a 3-by-6 Artory Battalion. So they had two batteries with eight guns, they're going to do three batteries with six. We're going to line a fires brigade with every division, headquarters, so I think we're, we're doing some minor adjustments to the Artorics. We had made some mistakes, I think, the first time around, so we're adjusting that a little bit as we go forward. So I feel comfortable that we're making sure that we have the right structure to ensure we still have fires and support of the Brigade Combat Teams and the Division Headquarters.
Well, sir, appreciate it.
Number three.
Sir, Sergeant Major of the Army, as we're drawing down right now, will the soldier be given the option to get out before completing their contract and still receive their benefits such as the JAB bill?
Sure. No. So, that is- So that is an option that the Army has, okay? But what we want to do is balance our drawdown with our, what we see as our operational needs. And we're not going to use that unless it's a, something of last resort. So let's say, for instance, we determine that we need to reduce the size of the Army faster than what we're doing now. So the drawdown needs to be complete by 2017, 490,000. If for some reason we've got to reduce the size of the force quicker, then we have a lever that we can use, which is granting voluntary early retirements or early separations. And we'll use that as necessary. But we don't want to do that unless it's absolutely necessary.
So let me, let me follow up on that. So we would only do that as a last resort. And let me tell you why. In fact, the last time this happened is when I was battalion commander right here. When we were downsizing, at that time, the active Army was like 900,000. And we were downsizing to like 550 or something like that. And they had a policy where anybody who wanted to leave could leave. And it drained a lot of talent out of the Army, and I'm greedy. I want to keep the best talent in the Army. So we're going to do this by, when we want people to leave, we're going to do it by those who are, we're going to keep the best talent, we're going to make judgments on those who aren't the best talent, we're going to ask them to leave. There'll be packages for them when we do that. So that means there won't be a lot of voluntary people raising their hands that say, hey, I want to go, let me go. We're probably not going to do that because we want to do it based on talent, performance, because we want to be, have the best people. And that's important to me. Because when we did this in the 90s, it took us a while to recover because we did not do it that way. And I'm not, we can't do that again because there's too much uncertainty in the world. I got to make sure we maintain the best people in the Army. And so as a Sergeant Major said, you know, that would be a last resort to do that. Now, if you're retirement eligible, that's a different issue. Obviously, you can do that at any time you want, but I'm talking about those prior to retirement eligible. I don't think we're going to have to, I don't think we will do that. I think we'll do everything through, you know, for the last year, for the first time, you know, not, everybody who wanted to re-enlist was allowed to re-enlist. That's the first time that's happened that I know of. So that might happen again next, this year, and next year, that everybody who wants to re-enlist might not be able to. And that'll be choices, you know, that are made based on performance. But it was a very small number last year, and it'll probably be a very small number next year. You're welcome. Number two.
Sir Sergeant Major, Specialist Colley, 51st Expeditionary Sigma Battalion. Over the past few years, I've completed several technical certification courses offered by the Army. And I was wondering, as those experiences are very valuable to me as a professional, as an expert, how would the budget cuts affect those programs?
I don't think that there's going to be any challenge if you've got a technical certification that's required for your MOS and you have a bunch of those. Now, if a soldier is looking for a technical certification outside of their MOS, that they're looking for the Army to pay for, we're going to have to make some considerations about whether or not we can sustain that. But if it's, from TRADOC and the G1 perspective, if it's a requirement of your MOS, then we are going to continue to fund those requirements.
For me, as we transition, schools and education continue to be a key, a key part of us developing leaders. And as I mentioned earlier, leader development is a priority. And so we will continue to prioritize the courses necessary for us to develop talent and develop leaders that assist us in having the best Army. And so as a Sergeant Major said, those certification schools that are necessary will remain. We won't get rid of those.
So number three over here.
Sir Sergeant Major, I was wondering if we got the call to go to Syria, how would those deployments be and how would that affect us lower enlisted?
Well, I mean, it'd be like, it depends on the circumstances, it depends on the mission they would ask us to do. But what, you know, we would, like we do any other time, if we got a call to go to Syria or any other place, you know, we would provide notice, we'd provide mission orders to the unit. And, you know, if it's a brigades, we'd move the brigades to wherever we asked them to go to execute the mission we're told. I'm being a little vague because, you know, we don't know what we might be asked to do in Syria, or if we'll be asked to do anything in Syria. So we have to be prepared to do that. You know, whether it might be just to provide humanitarian assistance in other, some, you know, there's a lot of displaced people out of Syria. So it might be asked to do that. It could be asked to train other indigenous forces for them to go into Syria. Or it could be for us to go in, we don't know. So, but, but we would, obviously, it would be like any deployment to Iraq or Afghanistan that we've had. We'd prepare the brigade, make sure they have the right mission, make sure they have the resources necessary, and then we'd send them in.
Let me ask you a question. Are you confident that if called upon to go to Syria, you'd be ready to go?
Hands down.
Okay. Because wherever we're going to be asked to go, we're going to do what the nation needs us to do, and we're going to execute it violently, and then we're going to go home. All right.
Sir Sergeant Major, I was wondering, are there any improvements y'all are developing for the SHARP program?
Ooh, there's a lot of things going on. I'll name a couple, Sergeant Major, if I know of those. So we're in the process of hiring a significant amount of victim advocates that will be both at the installation and brigade levels. Civilians who would do that, who are trained to do that kind of thing, we're working that. We are, you know, as you know, we're trying to increase the number of response coordinators throughout the Army. We are providing and we are developing new training capabilities that are more hands-on, more interactive, more discussion training that'll occur between soldiers. There's, there's some, we're trying to take best practices from other places and make sure people know about them. You know, there's a couple here that are working. The SARC, is that the right name?
Sexual Assault Response.
Yeah, yeah. Sexual Assault Response Capability that they would have here, TEAM SARC. There's a Sister in Arms programs that have been executed in someplace that we want to maybe translate throughout the Army. So there's all kinds of things going on right now. We're working it very hard in order to do the best we can to make people comfortable that they can come forward. And to make people comfortable that there will not be any retribution once they come forward. And that's the kind of thing we're really working hard. And we're trying to come up with many different ways to do this.
Have you got a recommendation for us?
Yeah, you got an idea?
A lot of us feel like if we go and talk to somebody, there's going to be reprisal.
Yeah.
A lot of it.
Yeah. So, so part of this is, you know, I just, you know, I, while I'm here, I talk to all the commanders, and I talk to them specifically about this. And I talk to them, it's not just about that, it's about creating an environment that gets rid of, it'll take a little bit of time to do that, but we're putting programs in place that will help us to create that environment because we're very aware of that concern. And the Sisters in Arms thing, and if we have advocates that are outside of the chain of command allows you to go outside of the chain of command, which helps in that, and then we can provide some, once you do that, provide, make sure you're not being, there's not any retribution as you go through that. So those are absolutely things we're looking at very, very hard. Thank you.
Just from my perspective, what I think that we've got to focus on, because we've had a lot of training as an Army, would all of you agree?
Oh.
Okay. It's now time for us to take action and understand that as professionals, we've got a duty to look out for one another. It's part of our ethos and who we say that we are. And that means making sure that each of us, you know, is looking out to ensure that we're not putting another soldier at risk, or that if a soldier is at risk, we're taking action. And I challenge everyone that's in this room to understand that part of your profession is commitment, commitment to one another and the Army's programs. If we focus on that and say, every person in the Army has got to be committed to one another, we will change this issue of sexual assault. We will reduce it and eventually eliminate it. But we've all got a responsibility to do it. This is not a female issue, it's not a male issue, it's an Army issue. And we'll solve this as an Army, just as we've been successful in every other thing that we've been asked to do. Whoa?
Oh.
Okay.
The other piece I would just add to that is, you can sit down. The other piece I would just add to that is, you know, if people aren't doing what we want to do, we're going to hold them accountable. If there's retribution, we're going to hold them accountable for that retribution. And I'm making it very clear to all the chain of command that that's what we're going to do. And, you know, it's understanding that we're serious, that we're serious about this. And it's time for a change. And women are going to play more and bigger and bigger role. And oh, by the way, there's male on male, there's female on female, there's, I mean, it's not just male and females, it's across, we're not going to tolerate any of it. But it's going to take all of us to do that. Because we need all the talent that we're getting. We need talented, you know, the strength of the Army that we have is our diversity. It's the fact that we have people that come from all different kinds of backgrounds, all different parts of the country, all different religions, all different, you know, some, that come from different financial backgrounds. That's what makes us strong, that we share this diversity. And that's what this is about, by the way. This is about having the right diversity and allowing people with, who are different from us, to have the same capabilities and same capabilities to improve themselves and become part of our Army. That's why we're as good as we are now, because of that. That's what this is about. And that's why the Sergeant Major said it's an Army problem. It's not a female problem, it's not a male problem, it's an Army problem. Two.
Sir Sergeant Major, Sergeant Clark from the 137. I was wondering if there's anything in works for the length of the medical evaluation board process? I feel pretty terrible that I've been in it for almost a year and I'm holding the spot of somebody who is healthy and we could spend money to train them and take my place.
So we are working this very hard. And in fact, I know you might find this hard to believe, we've actually made quite a bit of progress. This is a fine line we walk here on this. Because obviously, we want to, as you said, make room for those who can do everything and for those who can't. But we want to make sure the soldier who has a physical problem or another problem is taken care of. And it's taken care of properly and is given the right benefits as they leave the service. And so we want to get them out as quickly as possible, we want to make sure they get out right. Because, you know, you're, you're part of us. Even when you leave, you're part of the Army. And we want to make sure when you exit, you exit with all the right things and you have the ability to continue to contribute in whatever way you choose to contribute when you leave the Army. And so we have to, we have to walk that fine line every day. So we want to get them out, people out as fast as possible, we want to get them out with the right diagnosis of whatever it might be, and we want them to get out with the right package of benefits that they deserve. And that's what we're trying to do, and we're trying to do that as quickly as possible. We have improved it significantly. It used to average over 400 and some days, we're now down around 200 and something. But it's still too many, but we're getting better, and we're going to continue to work on that.
So the Vice Chief of Staff of the Army was out here last, last fall, and we went to several different locations, saw some things internally to the Army that we need to do to improve the process. And we've done those. And because we've been so successful, we've created a very big backlog with the VA, which is the PEB portion. Okay, so the VA has asked for some assistance, and we've committed a lot of soldiers right up here to Seattle to the VA processing to help assist them reduce their backlog. So the Army is getting it down to about 100 days on average, I believe, and the PEB is our holdup. We've applied Army assets to the VA to help them. We believe, we expect to have some, some very significant progress here with them shortly. Understand your challenge, and we are truly working as hard as we can to help you get that, move on to the next phase of your life.
Number four.
Sir Sergeant Major, Sergeant Montgomery, 42, Striker Brigade, MP Platoon. My question is, with a smaller Army, our promotion is probably going to slow down? And are we going to be able to stay in longer with the RCP?
I can answer that, sir, if you'd like. So actually, we believe proportionately promotions will not slow down all that much. Now, the time between promotions, as an Army, we've been looking at this for a couple of years, and we are saying that we're going to create some space between your current rank and we're eligible for the next one. And the reason we're doing that is so we can provide you with some more opportunities to do something beyond being, for instance, in your case, a military policeman. We want you to become a sergeant, then a staff sergeant, to be great in whatever it is that your MOS is, and then something else, like recruiter, drill sergeant, give you a broader perspective as we continue to grow you. I, I think that's a great program for us. We are not going to extend the RCPs to allow people to serve longer. We're expecting you to look at the time between your promotions as an opportunity to set yourself apart from your peers, and then when you are eligible, to be a person that can be competitive and get selected.
So, you know, the questions you ask is, works against each other. If you increase RCPs, you're going to decrease promotion rates. Because you can only have so many of each rank. So if you keep people in longer, that means you promote less people, and you have to promote them slower. So what we're trying to do is keep the balance between the two. Personally, I would tell you, my opinion is, over the last five or six years, we promoted people too fast. They weren't ready for the, and that's officers and non-commissioned officers both. We promoted them too quickly. And what they didn't gain was the experience that they're supposed to gain in the rank they're at. And so what I'm trying to do is get it back to the norms where I think you get the right experience. So when you move from sergeant to staff sergeant, you've had a time to learn to be a sergeant that prepares you to be a staff sergeant. We promoted lieutenants to captains too fast. We're going to slow that down just a little bit. So they, they have enough jobs as a lieutenant, so they actually have the chance to learn so when their captains are ready to take on the responsibility as a captain. That's important, you know? And, and so I think promotions will be fine. You know, obviously, as you know, it depends on MOS, too. If you're an over-strength MOS, it's more difficult. If you're an under-strength MOS, it gets promoted a little faster in the, in the, in the NCO corps. So it's a combination of all those factors. So what I'm telling you is, I think promotions are going to be fine, they're not going to be delayed significantly. You'll be able to get promoted. We want to give you the time to develop properly so you can perform in those positions that we give you with the right amount of experience, and by the way, the right education. We promoted people so fast, they weren't even going to the schools they're supposed to go to. And so we're going to change that as well. So thank, thanks for your question.
Thank you, sir. Sergeant Major.
Right here, you've had your hand up for a while, right there. Down front, yeah.
I have a couple of questions, I'm not sure if that's allowed, but um-
Depends what they are. No, I'm just kidding.
I understand that we want to make a, a good decision, you know, a plan of action for what we're going to do in Syria, but do you think it's taking too long to decide what our, our plans are?
Yeah. So first on Syria, I would tell you, Syria is an incredibly complex situation. Incredibly complex. And frankly, it's probably bigger than Syria right now. For what's, everybody's taking sides and, so I think we have to be very careful before we make a decision on what we're going to do. And I think that's what we're doing, we're being cautious, and I think that's appropriate. Because what we don't want to do is that all of a sudden we say, we're going to put in, you know, 20,000 US soldiers, and we become the lightning rod for both sides. You know, if we're going to do something, we want to make sure it can make a difference very quickly, we understand what the end state is, and we can get out. And so we have to decide that. What we really would like to do is the, is the militaries in the, in that area to help solve the problem. And maybe we could help assist them in solving the problem. So those are the kind of things we're working on. So it's very difficult, that's why it's taking time. I know everybody has lots of opinions on this, but I think we have to go about it very carefully. Do you have another question?
Yes, regarding service members transitioning into the VA and the backlog, do you feel the, the terms for disability are possibly too lenient? You know, people claiming for, for ailments that maybe aren't, you know, related to battle or-
The problem we have, actually, is we have a system. So the Army has a system. And we, we determine disability. And then the VA has a separate system. So you go through the Army system, and then you got to go through the VA system. What we really like to see is, let's get one system that everybody goes through that's the same. We haven't been able to get there yet. But that's, that would be the ultimate solution as we go through this. But that's, that would be the ultimate solution as we go through this.
And the other thing I'd ask you to just consider is the element of trust. So, unless you're a doctor or a person of that capacity, we're not experts in how to diagnose whether or not a person has a, some type of either behavioral, physical injury. You've got to trust them that they're going to do what, what they know by their training, just like you, is what's your MOS?
I'm a Signal Battalion Lieutenant.
Okay, so, you're an expert in your field. I'm not going to sit there and say you don't know what you're doing, or you're being too easy, or you're not, you know, diagnosing or understanding the, the comms traffic well. Got to trust you to do that. We've got to trust the doctors, that they are an expert in their field, and they're going to make a judgment on the level of disability, and then allow the system to work. Because we're just not experts in how to do that kind of stuff. We may have an opinion, but that's all it is.
And in some cases, these are lifetime decisions that they make. And so we've got to make sure they're right. Number two.
Sergeant Major, my name is Corporal Franco from 56 MMB. My question kind of piggybacks with the SHARP question. It's, we, you, you said a lot of reactive stuff, like what we're doing to react to the sexual harassment and sexual assault, but I didn't really hear anything more, so to be proactive, i.e. like, the modern Army Combatant Program, where it instills that self-defense in a soldier, I feel like it's kind of in the backburner, and it should be upfront, because one, it's cheap, you don't really need a lot of money to train combatants, and two, it's, it instills that confidence in that soldier, and it instills that knowledge in that soldier.
Yeah. So, so what I would say to that is, absolutely right. So, sometimes I might not come across exactly right, but let me, let me explain. So, how I've defined this is, I've kind of, in military terms, I've said, you know, when we first came across IEDs, you know, we want to get left of the explosion, and we wanted to figure out, why was the explosion happening? That's what we want to do with sexual assault, we want to get left of the sexual assault. So we figure out, why is it happening, and how do we protect those from that? So, we, combatants is something I think we want to go forward with, and I think we're pushing that very hard as a program, we'll continue to do that. But there's other things we're doing too, through trying to make people realize what really is causing sexual assault, and, and so we can prevent it. And that's some of the training we're trying to develop. The teams that we're putting, we're trying to develop at the installation level, are teams that help to ensure that people understand how we prevent it from happening, because that's exactly where we're headed. And your comment on combatants is a great one, and, and I think we're supportive of it. I, you know, we can take a look at it, if you think there's a problem with it, we'll take a look at it.
Well, I feel, nothing personal or anything, but, the program, the Modern Army Combatants is out, and people know of it, but it has that stigma that goes along with it, i.e. soldiers get hurt, it's related to MMA or stuff like that, and then not enough commanders or first sergeants or sergeant majors support it.
We'll work on it. Sergeant Major, you have any...
Yeah, I'm just, a couple of things that we have done with combatants, okay, is, from a trade arc perspective, we're focused on Level One, which is to instill confidence in yourself and your teammates that when faced with a situation, that you can provide non-kinetic, a non-kinetic way to solve the problem of maintaining the edge over, over the enemy. So, we still have a very strong combatant program. I would recommend, if you've got a challenge within your formation, that you get it into the senior leadership, and you've got Sergeant Major, the core Sergeant Major right here, okay? So when we get done, I guarantee you, he's going to want to talk about what we need to do. This is not, this is about solving problems. And if there's a, a communication challenge or something within any organization, if you get it into the right leader's hands, we are going to solve the problem. Cool?
You know, programs like that are programs I am very much in support of. I, I'm into the physical training, to developing ourselves to protect, that's who we are. You know, it helps not only you as an individual, helps us as an Army that we teach combatants.
Roger, sir. My, this, what we usually come up against is, as an instructor, I'm certified Level Three, I can instruct, I can certify. It's really difficult to, not just in, not in my specific battalion, but across the Army itself, over the units I've been in, it's very difficult to enforce it.
Yeah, we're getting after it.
Because it has that stigma.
Plus that, as an Army, we're working on it.
Okay, so, we're going to take two more questions, so I guess it's four and three up there, so, four.
Sergeant Sergeant Major, I was told that for linguists, the standard is going to be raised to 3-3 as opposed to a 2-2, that is, two steps above, and very hard for soldiers who are assigned to tactical units such as JBLM and Fort Bragg, who aren't working and using their language. Can you tell us a little bit about that, Sergeant Sergeant Major?
Not tracking that at all.
Yeah, no, I'm not tracking that either. Here's, here's what I'll do, though, is I will go find out, and make sure we get your name, and I'll give you a response to that. But I'm pretty sure that is not the case, but if it is, I'm going to look into it, because I agree with you, but I'll get you an answer back, okay?
Roger, sir.
Sir, Sergeant Major, Sergeant Ream from 3-2 HHC Brigade.
Does the MIG Brigade Commander know anything about that? Hold on a second, is he here? No, okay, go ahead.
I know, over the last few years, promotion, the system has changed significantly, and there's minor changes constantly going on. With sequestration, is there any more significant changes that we should be looking forward to, or...
Talking about semi-centralized promotions, sergeant and staff sergeant?
Roger, Sergeant Major.
Okay. One, one major change that we're going to have, that we briefed the chief on a couple of months ago, is we are going to reduce the deployment points, okay, as we continue to transition out of Afghanistan. And because really, that whole decision was made off the availability of access to the Internet for folks to take college courses. And, in most of the places that we are still deployed, that, that infrastructure is there if you choose to do so. What we're going to do with those promotion points is focus on physical fitness, in other words, more points applied for physical fitness, and weapons qualification. So we believe those are really the areas that you can control yourself by your own application or non-application of some effort. So basically, military education, you're still going to get the same amount of points for that. Civilian education, the same amount of points. You've got to get your self, structured self-development done, and then you'll have an increase in physical fitness points and on weapons qualification. Now, the exact date of that has not yet been determined, because the G1 person has got to do a little bit work on timing piece, and then we'll get that back into the chief for a final decision.
And the deployment points will come down slowly. We're not simply sporadically say, okay, no more.
Right.
Because we realize that's still important, and we'll do that slowly over time. So it'll adjust slowly to what the Sergeant Major said over time.
Okay.
Will there be any kind of system that kind of levels it out because of people coming back from deployments that are injured that can't...
So what the chief was just talking about means, well, those points may start to fade away, so next month, instead of 18, you've got 17, next month after that, you might be 16. That piece of it, we don't have completely wired yet, but that's how it'll generally work.
Roger, thank you.
Yep.
We are honored to have General Odiano and Sergeant Major of the Army Chandler recognize six soldiers and civilians for outstanding service and exceptional achievements. General Odiano is presenting Chief of Staff of the Army coins to the following individuals. Staff Sergeant Aaron Grenier from the Warrior Transition Battalion is recognized for demonstrating sound judgment and quick thinking that was directly linked to saving the life of a Warrior Transition Battalion soldier.
Cool. Congratulations. Thanks for all you're doing, War. Here, here's one of these. Great job. I will say.
Sergeant Larry Blase from 3rd Brigade, 2nd Infantry Division, is recognized for recognizing that an intoxicated soldier needed immediate medical attention and rushing him to the hospital just in time for medical professionals to save the soldier's life.
Cool. Great job. Thanks for your service. Cool.
Specialist Adam Nepper from 2nd Brigade, 2nd Infantry Division, is recognized for operating the Mine Hound on point for over 300 dismounted combat patrols and eight major clearing operations in Afghanistan. Although injured when his platoon leader triggered an IED, he cleared back to the blast site to administer aid, cleared another 600 meters to the helicopter landing zone, and then back to the platoon's strong point, meanwhile exploiting and reducing an additional four IEDs along the way.
Wow. Great job. That's a great performance. Thanks for all you're doing. We recognize you as a soldier, War.
Specialist Eric Lawson from the 537th Firefighter Detachment is recognized for saving the life of a 12-day-old child by performing basic lifesaving procedures when he responded to an emergency house call.
Well done.
Mr. Jeffrey Heim is being presented the Civilian Service Award for 35 years of government service. Mr. Heim has served the Army in positions from maintenance engineer to engineering program manager, and is currently the Assistant Chief of Staff for Facilities for Western Regional Medical Command. Mr. Heim's years of dedicated service greatly contributed to the success of the Army and the Engineer Corps.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Specialist Robert Anderson is being presented the Soldier's Medal for Heroism while responding to a horrific traffic accident on 23 August 2010.
Right here, War.
While driving home from work, Specialist Anderson's car was one of six vehicles hit during a six-minute span of wrecks involving the same car. He showed unparalleled selfless service beyond the call of duty when he placed himself in grave danger to ensure the safety of a total stranger who had just hit his vehicle minutes before. Without regard for his personal safety, Specialist Anderson assisted in administering emergency medical care and rescuing a woman from her burning car, which was fully engulfed in flames just seconds after he pulled her to safety. Specialist Anderson's selfless service and personal courage reflect distinct credit upon himself, the Warrior Transition Battalion, Blanchfield Army Community Hospital, the 101st Airborne Division Air Assault, and the United States Army.
Cool. Well done, War. Great job. Cool.
Let's give one more round of applause for the great soldiers in this Army. Thank you very much. So, I'll just close like I started. It's because of five soldiers in the Department of the Army, something like that is why I love serving in this Army. Because I get to associate with people like that every single day. That's who we are. That's what I try to communicate, that's, that's what defines us. Selfless sacrifice, accomplishment of mission, and that, that's what will continue to define us as we move to the future. So thank you very much. I'll end this like I always do. The strength of our nation is our Army. The strength of our Army is our soldiers. The strength of our soldiers is our families, and that's what makes this Army strong. Thank you very much, and God bless all of you.
Cool.
Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes today's town hall meeting. Thank you all for attending. Please remain in your seats until the official party departs.